Yeah, I don't care like wherever.
I'd like to stop.
President of the United States of America and to the government for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Say thank you all for coming. We'll start our meeting with the vote call.
This is here.
Here.
This is through here. Is your manager from America?
Here.
This is.
Here.
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 Mr. Bassel. This is John. Here.
Okay, we'll go into guests and patrons. Remember that it's going to be an element of five minutes and try to keep it to what we're discussing if we can, okay? So first is Pastor Marty.
Hello, everyone. I'm Pastor Marty. I'm part of the Northern Cambria Library Board. And we've sent a letter to Mr. Bronish as well as to Dr. Krug about putting the public library on for the budget. We just, I just want to tell you that the library prioritizes the children in our district. And that the library hours, we try to do those so that they suit the children. And we currently have a preschool class that is very popular. And it's on Tuesday, so I saw some of it today. It was really good. In the summertime, we had three classes for a six-week period. Preschool kids, early elementary, and young junior high. And they were very popular too for a six-week program. We also did a food program for the children too. The students can work at the library and do community service hours. I think it's, it's one of the best things that we have in our community to enrich academics and encourage the children. We have free Wi-Fi for the children and there are computers that they can use. And I think if the school is and the library are working hand in hand, only the children will benefit. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay, next on the list, we have Mr. Jim Rocko. Jim, if you could state your address, please, and your name.
My address? Elder Avenue, Northern Cambria. Okay, maybe I'm jumping together a little bit on this, but I kind of wanted to get ahead because we didn't get ahead of the last project and that would kind of didn't go my way. So in terms of what's going to happen to the high school from now on, or from this point forward. I'm assuming that it's probably going to have, I mean, we have some time right now because it's still a year and a half plus down the road. But I honestly, honestly, honestly don't see how our sports programs are going to function without at least some chunk of that high school. I tried to get this across before we did the project. No one seemed to really want to hear it. I'm sure they did want to hear it. They did listen, but it turned out they decided not to. But I think with the cuts that were made to the project, you're going to have, you're going to run into massive storage space problems. I just don't think they're going to be there. I think you could potentially run into classroom problems, which the high school can't help you with unless you could shift some other things around down here. But what I'm hoping is that even though I'm sure there's friction on the board, I know how that would be if I was sitting in your position and depending on how I voted. I'm just hoping at this point, even though I'm sure we maybe don't all get along as well as we should, that we get together and do what's best for the kids in the school district at this point. And I honest to God think that means we have to keep some part of the high school. I don't know how you can have football practice up there if every, the equipment and all the dressing rooms are down here. I don't know how you can have track up there if the equipment and all the dressing rooms are down here. It's too big of a span. There's no, there's not enough bathroom facilities up there. There's nowhere to get out of the rain up there. I just think for the benefit of the kids, the school district, that, and I know this is something the school can't pay for. I know that. But there are grants out there. We had talked to politicians over the summer. I'm sure you guys are just as familiar with them. Maybe finally, we can get state and/or federal people to see that, you know, every now and then throw us a grant. Like everything doesn't have to go to Evansburg. Maybe this is our chance. Like maybe we can say, look, we have this beautiful building. To rebuild it would cost many, many millions of dollars, which this community does not have. This is a major asset to our community, to our school district. Can we please find some money to take care of it, to fix it up, to get rid of the classroom section, keep the gym, the auditorium, maybe even the offices in case they're needed at some point. Certainly, it will help us with storage space. It will help us with that. I'm telling you right now, I don't know how the athletic programs are going to work without that third gym. We went through this before, kind of just got brushed aside, unfortunately. I don't think it's going to work without it. I really think we have years now to prepare for this. Please get together however you have to, whoever you have to call. I mean, the borough needs to be part of this. We have a 503, whatever it is, Committee for Nonprofits is part of the borough. All these people have to come together so we can save part of that, which will be an enormous benefit to our school district and our community. And I just hope we start early now to get together on this and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, we'll slide on into the administrative reports. Superintendent for.
Actually, I have some student recognition to start with.
I apologize.
Yes. So we've had lots of great things happen over the past few months and I'm glad to see your students are here and parents are here that we can recognize you. So first, Ty. It's Ty here. Well, Ty Dom received 1,000 points in basketball, if you didn't know. That is such an achievement for a junior student. We are so proud of him. And just very excited for the whole basketball team and how well they did this year. So definitely we'll make sure that he gets that certificate. TSA, let's talk a little bit. We always have such a strong TSA team. And we have senior high and some junior high teams that have actually gone to Nationals and have won Nationals. I mean, that's a real feather in our cap for Northern Cambria School District. And I'm so proud of these students and all the extra time and work and their time and work that their advisors have put into this. And I've always told them, I know the board is very supportive of these students. Anything you need, we're here to support you to make sure that you can be successful. So I'd like to recognize, and some of these teams won more than, more than one category. So this team won first place in digital video production at the TSA regional competition. Ben Carpanello, Mikey Kninsky, Olivia Yonner, and Alyssa Yonner. And I did see Mikey is here, right? Come on down. Ben? Definitely, we have such a strong team. So what's next for this group?
We're going to states.
States, and that's at
Seven Springs.
July 7th, and that's what, what day did that?
April.
Seventeenth.
April 17th, and then where's Nationals this year?
Orlando.
Orlando, close to Disney. All right, so I'm sure you're excited about that. So we're very proud of you. Congratulations. All right, thanks for coming tonight. I have another team that won first place in structural design and engineering, Sophie Williams and Alex Kosh. Are those two here tonight? Come on down. Mom and dad here too? Excellent. Yes, parents here. Awesome. Congratulations, mom and dad as well. So what's next for you guys?
State as well.
States as well at Seven Springs. And was this something you prepared for? Was this a competition you just did when you were there?
We prepared for it, and then at State, there's a portion we do on site.
So I know last year I visited States, and I know sometimes you're just given a box with stuff in it and you have to build something.
Yeah.
So congratulations. We're excited to see how you do.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, you're welcome. Hey. So I have another team, and this team won in two categories. They won first place in video game design and first place in system control technology. This is Ella Miller and Reed Miller. So all right, I guess they're not here this evening, but congratulations to those two. My Fab Four are coming back again. So they won first place in senior solar sprint. You guys have won this several years, have you not?
Yeah, we have.
All right, Ben, Mikey, Olivia, and Alyssa, come on down again. Congratulations. And we do really well in solar sprint. I know our junior high team won Nationals last year, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I know. So we're very excited for them. Ben missed out on all. We'll make sure to give him those as well. And so you're competing, are you competing in anything else? Olivia, you won first place in prepared presentations, didn't you? Congratulations. So it's pretty amazing. I mean, look how well-rounded these students are, able to compete in all those competitions. So just so proud of you. All right, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, do we have Logan here tonight? Logan Rouse. Come on down, Logan. He won first place in the PA Delta Dart. Logan, what's a PA Delta Dart?
What?
Is it a thing you throw or is it a car?
Yeah.
Congratulations. So first place, when I think of dart, I think of yard darts, yards. People might remember that my age, right? We were all going to die from yard darts. So congratulations, Logan. Right, how about Laura Blickendorfer and Rachel Worgo? Are you here this evening? Come on down, ladies. They won first place in something called off the grid. What's off the grid?
Well, it's like family, we have to try and solve the world. Something like people living off the grid.
Okay, oh, so without any electricity, so solar power, those types of things? So you prepared that before?
Yeah.
You came. Congratulations. So you're off to states, right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Right, another team here, Maya Friedman, Ava Kirsch, and Emmy McCracken.
Maya.
Maya, congratulations. Ava, congratulations. And Emmy, congratulations. So you did innovations and inventions. What was that?
We had to make a school safety device.
What did you make?
Like a light that signals what to do during emergencies when you're having a classroom.
Excellent. So in case you put in here, you have this light that's going on.
Yeah.
So maybe that's something we can incorporate into our building plan. I think this might be a good group to look at, to have, we may have you work with our design experts. See if maybe we can incorporate that safety light, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know that is one of the things that SiteLogic is going to do. They plan on working with our students to kind of show them the engineering process and show them how those things can be done. Kind of like working in real time. So I think we have a perfect project there to kind of build on for that. All right, we have, I think I have a couple more TSA. Jacob Butterbaum won first place in flight competition. I don't see Jacob here tonight. And Ella Cass. Ella won first place in Dragsters, so they'll be going on to states as well. Okay, now let's talk about kid wins. Kid win competition, I believe this competition is two years old. Is it two years old? So last year, we sent a group from the high school. They had to build a turbine, a wind turbine. We were better than any team that was there. We were the team to beat. And they won last year, and guess what? They won again this year. So they called themselves the Breezy Bros. So this is Jack Shuretti, Ethan Donatelli, Ethan Blickendorfer, and Mikey Kninsky. Well, Mikey, you're a senior, right? What are your plans? Your plans? Is it Jack? Ethan, I'm sorry.
I'm going to go to UCGA for civil engineering.
Civil engineering, perfect. You've had some real-world experience with that as well. How about you?
I'm doing the same thing.
Excellent. So you've had the perfect experience of dealing with engineering. I'm sure it will help you tremendously. All right, we're so proud of you both. Thank you. And the last competition I have is PJAS. And this stands for the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science. And this competition, I actually had done a lot with this competition. I was the state director for about six years in this. And students prepare a scientific project. They do an experiment and then they go and they present. And then they're judged on the quality of that project. And then you have first place, second place, third place. So we have two that earned a second place at PJAS at the regional competition. That's Mia Shuretti and Ella Cass. Congratulations to those ladies. And we have some first place winners. So this is very impressive that we had six from our school place first. Mia Kerr, Chloe Jesko, Laney Shervenko, Shervenko?
Shiverzko.
Shiverzko, thank you. Carly Matori, Julia Matori, and Ella Miller. We have those ladies who are here. Please come down. All right, well, congratulations and just keep up the good work, students. We appreciate all that you do and all the glory that you bring to our school. Thank you. I can move on to my report now. This is the chair.
Yes.
So tomorrow, yes, students, if you need to go, you have lots to do. Thank you for coming. So I just wanted to report that tomorrow, we're doing a mental health fair for our students at the elementary, middle school. And the principals have done such an excellent job, again, focusing on how students can cope with their mental health and how to prepare them and how to just deal with all the pressures that they may have. I know I'm, I'm sure you're seeing on the news about what happened at Forest Hills. Terrible tragedy for that community. And so certainly feeling that and want everyone to know that we do take the mental health of our students and our staff very seriously and want to do everything we can to support those kids. So the students will be experiencing that tomorrow. And that's all I have for my report. Thank you.
Monthly financial report, Mr. Karch.
I submitted the pligot accounts to you guys previously, but I'll just go down through them real quick. These are again all pligot accounts. The, and this is the ending balances in those accounts as of the end of February. The general fund is $2,146,000. The capital reserve is $3,113,000. The athletic fund is $134,000. The Series 2022 bonds, the ending balance is $10,029,000. And the Series 23 bonds, the ending balance is $9,761,000. And the total of all pligot funds at the end of February was $25,186,388. The dividends earned from all of those funds during the month of February is $42,501. And as I mentioned to the board before, we only recognize interest that's earned when we, when the product comes due. So they are accruing interest. A lot of the term bonds accrue interest each month. We don't book that until they actually come to. So and as they come due, they will be on that particular month's report. FNV accounts, the general fund, ending balance, as of again February the 29th, is $1,666,179. That's the general fund FNV account. The athletic account is $1,482. The activities account for high school and elementary respectively is $66,132, $15,230. Our capital reserve account was overdrawn. There was a transfer that shows up on the first of the month to cover that. And the capital reserve money market is $5,094. That's it for the accounts. Any questions?
I have one. When we start paying the bills for the building, which I think we're going to be doing some of them tonight, do you, is there a certain order that you take out of which bond fund?
I have not had to touch those yet, but I will have to. When I do start removing those funds, they will come out of the twenty-two. We actually have already started making payments out of the capital reserve to the coin contractors already.
Okay, minute approval. Be resolved the minutes of the February 6, 2024, the whole meeting and February 20, 2024, regular meeting are approved as presented. Do I have a motion? Motion, Mr. Jen Zenshaw? This is Laura Krug. Comments on that first? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Treasury Financial Report. Be resolved the Treasury Financial Report for February 2024 will be approved as presented or amended receiving filed. Roll pretty much one over that kind of stuff, right? But you just did.
Yeah. The details are in there.
But the other people were good. Thank you for that. Anybody have any questions on that kind of stuff? Okay, do I have a motion? First one, Mr. Mike Paus. Second one, Mr. Jen Zenshaw. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried.
All right, the enrollment report, as you can see, right now we have a total of 812 kids as compared to 834 last year. 176 IDAs, special red, 21 gifted, as opposed to 165 IDAs, 17 gifted last year. Votech kids are 71 as opposed to 66 last year. So you can read on that. So we'll move into the action agenda. Buildings and ground, Mrs. Carol.
Building project, okay. The work continues on grounds and also inside of the building with demolition. This week, they were connecting existing drains from the parking lot to the new drains in the infield. So they closed the bus lane. Did that go well?
Actually, I would like to thank all the parents. It went very well, much better than what we had anticipated. And I would like to thank Jean Messina for, and Dave Whitmore for really getting everything set up. We had tons of teacher help. I was out there with the buses. And again, thank you, parents, for being so cooperative and so patient with us as we work through these.
So that work will continue for this year. Okay, does anybody have any questions for SiteLogic? Next up will be Frank with Access, and he's going to talk about the 971 D tax allocation.
And SiteLogic does have a presentation tonight as well.
Yes.
Mine's really brief. The federal government offers a minor tax incentive to, to corporations when they're doing building projects to incentivize them to do energy efficient designs. And when the corporation is a, is a nonprofit or a non-taxpaying, like a public school, that incentive rolls through to the designers. So there was just a form that had, that needed to be signed that allows that incentive to roll through to the designer.
Any questions or what I can share? No? Questions?
Okay, the next slide is panel of each side.
SiteLogic.
SiteLogic is going to have a discussion on available grants and.
Mara, can you see the screen? Can you see what I shared?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Do you all have one of these in front of you? You should. I mean, it's going to be on the screen. It's just for you. It might be too. Get it here. But appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Wanted to spend some time going over some available grants as it relates to, obviously, there's discussion about the high school and sort of the applicability of any sort of potential funds for the high school, but also reviewing kind of the availability as we look at the current project. Most of the programs I'm going to talk about tonight have been recently implemented. They were adopted in what was finally wrapped up in the 2024, 2025 budget, which was finally passed right before the end of the year. So if you go to the next slide, going to give a little bit of overview of what is called the Public School Facility Grant, Public School Facility Improvement Grant Program, very wordy program, but this is a program that is not, is sort of distancing itself from the traditional reimbursement of PlanCon where it was going to fund major facility improvements or new construction. This is looking at identifying really deferred maintenance and grant availability is limited to, we'll talk about that on the next page, but it's looking at sort of your more maintenance type items. Your roofs, your mechanical, electrical plumbing systems, health and safety upgrades, any sort of emergency issues that may arrive when dealing with the facility. So this grant application period just opened beginning of this month, March 1st. It closes May 31st. I think I put down fall 2024 as the anticipated project awards. That's based on what the state is telling me. I think they're being a little bit aggressive with that timeline, given how quickly we know that they move. So I think it could be fall or winter 2024, just throwing it out there. But that's kind of what they're at least indicating, you know, to districts and to entities like ourselves that have been reaching out and inquiring about the program. You'll see there what includes. They're, they've been pretty particular about not including or not awarding funds for work that is taking place after the award. So what will happen is if a school district is awarded one of these, they'll get a grant contract from the Department of Community Economic Development. You might be asking yourself why the Department of Community Economic Development, that is sort of unique for school districts. In the past, most of the grant programs around school facilities were administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. There's a few reasons why they did this. One was so that they could administer it through the Commonwealth Financing Authority, which is the clearinghouse for grant funds that are administered from the Department of Community Economic Development. It's a which is the clearinghouse for grant funds that are administered from the Department of Community Economic Development. It's a um, it's an insanely political organization um that typically does not meet until all parties are sort of on the same page about where the funds are going. Uh, this is the same entity that awards multimodal transportation funding grants. Uh, they oversee local share account, which is the uh proceeds from casino and gambling taxes. Uh, they oversee Act thirteen, which is the uh program that administered the Marcellus shale impact fee or, or, or ship, excuse me, shale tax. So there's a lot of little local programs that, that they administer. So um, they, the, the legislature put this program under the CFA uh for really no reason other than they have their ability to sort of input on where the funding is going. Um, so I just wanted to make that distinction because it is, you know, different than in years past where the Department of Education would have typically administered this. Um, the, the bullet point there u- under where it says applicants may apply for one school building. Um, you know, I just want to explain that a little bit in greater detail. What they've decided is you can submit as many applications as you'd like. Um, I, I don't recommend that um for a variety of reasons. First of which is there's a hundred million dollars to go around for five hundred school districts. So um, I think you just have to recognize that while this is a great first step, it's, it's falling well short of the total need that exists out there for Pennsylvania public schools. Uh, so with, with that being said, I think focusing on one application is better than spending time producing multiple. But what they're saying is you can submit one application for uh one building where you're addressing multiple scopes of work. So you might be doing a roof replacement, HVAC equipment, uh, doors, windows, building envelope, or you can look at, in this case, it doesn't necessarily apply for, for this district, but you could address the same scope item at multiple school buildings. So if you wanted to do boiler replacement at two buildings, that would be a single application. So what they're trying to prevent is addition from submitting one application where there's sixteen different things going to a bunch of different schools. So um, that's what that means in case you have a question. So the next, on the next slide, just gives you idea, we spent some time going over this, but gives you an idea of what is eligible for uh this, under this program. Uh, quite a bit here. Um, it is very broad, uh, but again, it, it is, it was created with trying to attack deferred maintenance needs that exist within a school district. Um, on the next slide, you'll see what they, this is taken directly from the program guidelines and it's the application evaluation. So I'll, I'll just read quickly, you know, they, they, they're basing it off of school entity wealth, although they don't define how they're going to uh evaluate school entity wealth, what that will be based off of. Um, and, and although these are ranked, I don't know that there's necessarily a weight to any one of these four um items. Uh, but then second would be building condition, including age. Third would be emergencies, and then fourth would be health, safety, and security. Um, I think it's really important to note that there's one piece on this application evaluation that's missing, and that would be politics. Um, I think in this case, politics will prevail and um, obviously they weren't going to list that as number one, but um, you know, I, I think at this point, it's, you know, better to be honest about what, you know, it's going to take to help, you know, get one of these applications funded. So um, on the next slide, shifting gears um into a different program. So there were two programs funded uh in last year, at the end of last year's budget. Um, this is a Department of Education program uh that is trying to address um environmental concerns that would exist in a building. Um, they, they are not necessarily limited to uh asbestos uh mold uh or lead, although those are the things that they identify in the grant guidelines. Um, this program is a little bit different than um the last program, which is beginning, you, you can be reimbursed for uh asbestos lead or mold remediation that occurred uh after July first of last year. So it is, you know, backwards looking, whereas the other program was not. Um, the initial round of funding for this program is seventy-five million. Um, it does carry a fifty percent local match. So um, if the district were to submit a million dollar application, you'd be on the hook for, for a half million dollars. Um, the application period doesn't open until May first and closes June thirtieth. Um, worth noting, the governor in his budget address last month uh indicated that he'd like to see both of these programs funded um again and in, in a larger way. Um, requesting three hundred million dollars a year for both programs over the next five years. So something to keep in mind going forward. Um, we can go to, yes.
For the match, would that be a cash match?
Um, typically, yes. I mean, the simple answer to that is yes, but there are some cases where um it, it doesn't necessarily have to be. I think in this case, for this program, it, it most likely would be.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I failed to mention, I apologize. On the, on the, if you go back two slides, sorry, Dr. Sonnet, uh, one more, I'm sorry. Yeah, I failed to mention, thi- this program does carry a twenty-five percent local match, and the, the grant awards range from a half million dollars to five million dollars. Um, just again, something I, I glossed over and I apologize. So um, yes.
Is there any fees attached to going out these applications?
Uh, there's a hundred, for this one, there's a hundred dollar fee. Um, and then for the, I don't believe the environmental repairs program, I don't, since the application's not open yet, I don't know what that fee is.
Okay. And then what about if we are awarded the, the grant? Is there a portion that goes to you?
Psychologic, no.
Okay.
No, we're.
I just know that there's some, like, if you.
Yeah, so um, a lot of entities uh will charge a fee, um, whether it's upfront or whether it's on the backend, if you're awarded, we are not charging the district any fee.
Thank you.
I mean, I think, you know, we can get into it at the end, you know, if you all have questions, but I think there's been some legwork done in terms of associating values, or at least generally speaking, um, a high priority list for the high school. Um, you know, that, that would, would go to, you know, providing a space that would be usable, you know, going forward for whoever's going to occupy that space. So um, some, I would not say all, but some of that legwork has already been done, you know, as far as the application. So.
Thank you.
The next one is the COVID, this is a really obnoxious title, so I, so please bear with me, but the COVID nineteen American Rescue Plan, PA Multipurpose Community Facilities Program. Uh, so interestingly, this program's being administered by the Pennsylvania Broadband Development Authority. Um, out of the American Rescue Plan uh, which was passed in two thousand and twenty-one, um, there's about three hundred million dollars that was, was uh given to Pennsylvania for broadband development or, you know, broadband deployment. You know, programs that were going to fund broadband expansion across the Commonwealth. Um, they have not spent that money fast enough, and they have a time, they had, they're, they're up against the clock. Uh, this money has to be allocated before the end of the year. Um, so the Broadband Development Authority recognized that they were going to struggle to meet that. Um, and so they created this program. Uh, and so this program, you can read there, but the, the, the funds are available to what they're calling community anchor institutions. Uh, they do name schools in the guidelines as one of those community anchor institutions. Uh, but they want to see that the, the, the project or the money is going to fund um a community use facility that enables work, education, and health monitoring uh because of the COVID nineteen sort of attachment to that. You know, broadly, these funds have to go to some sort of addressing, you know, health and safety. Um, in addition to that, because it is the Pennsylvania Broadband uh Development Authority, there also has to be sort of a um broadband spin to this. Um, this program ranges from two, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand to two million. Um, applications are due next month. Um, I'll be honest, I'm not incredibly bullish about this program uh because it's very broad. It's open to not just schools, but local governments, nonprofits, and there's about forty-five million dollars to go around. So um, I do think there's obviously a, a tie-in with the high school that we could look at pursuing, uh, but I just wanted to, to try to be realistic about um, you know, the likelihood of, of this program. So, yes.
And uh, two points. One for the, one of the, I was going to wait for the amount of that real quick. Just on the, one we said about the safety of the facilities. I don't know if that was the one of the twenty-five percent match. Um, can you use that if you get approved of offset costs that we might be doing for safety there? Like if we're improving it, that's the goal. Can we apply for funds under anticipation? We have costs associated that we would be improving the safety of this school.
I'd ha- I'd have to look at that. Um, generally speaking, they don't want the funds going to they don't want the funds going backwards in terms of funding things that have already happened.
What if we didn't do it yet, though? For instance, like those aren't.
Sure. So, yeah, we'd have to look at that in terms of whether that's possible. Um, but uh, we could look, take a closer look at that.
For everyone to put, I, I, I can't recall if there was glass, like the bullet resistant glass on. So I don't know if it was just an investment or a cost. Again, I'm just thinking out loud here for things that could be done down here, thinking, why did that, that's something about safety. I can't recall which one.
There is, there is film that you can put onto windows. Uh, some school districts have put film onto all their first story windows. Uh, it's not considered bulletproof, but bullet resistant. It is very expensive. Um, several hundreds of thousands of dollars, but that could be something that's not in our design that maybe we could look at doing.
Yeah, which again, it'd be referred to off tech costs, but if you, but again, we can off. And then secondly, just on this other round here, just by my way, it'll be forty-five million. But again, I know June talked about, again, if we have a community center, but say we had a room, room, room set for free broadband for those people or sure, so we had the library, wanted to potentially they had interest in putting a library there, which would be education in my mind. Um, you know, health monitoring, people talking about giving that one budget later to offer. So did they remember? I'm just wondering, again, would that be things that we could try to do to put something on the grant for?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that, I think that ties in. Yeah. I mean, I think you have to start to identify the potential future uses of that space. Um, I mean, I say this all the time, it, 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 it's a little bit corny, but any grant is about telling a story. And so I think in order to have an effective application, you have to, you know, tell the story. What is the story for that, you know, space? And I think at this point, you know, you can dream big and then kind of work your way down. But obviously, that space has a, a bunch of potential uses.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Um, what Mike touched on briefly in this, in his first question. So I know there are times where, like, we just get a surprise grant where the state will say, hey, we're giving you fifty thousand dollars towards improving your safety or something.
Sure.
Would we be able to use that grant or those funds to match? Or to assist with, with some of those?
I'd have to read the guidelines in more s- in more specificity, but I believe um, they, you can match federal funds, but I don't think they view state funds as matching. I, I would like to double check that to um, provide further clarity, but it.
It's just would be cool if we could not have a pool for our fund, but if we already have it coming in.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, you, you are, and your team, um, could help us write these grants.
Yeah.
Um, exactly. I had seen on that list, uh, boiler demolition, things like that, and those are all applicable to our high school. And so we could potentially apply for that grant and use that money towards uh resurrecting this school for communities.
Yes. Yep.
Have you found any um grants that would possibly cover feasibility study or the cost of one?
Yeah, so is the COVID nineteen uh, the American Rescue Plan program, that is one of the eligible expenses. Yeah, so you could request a smaller amount without capturing construction cost at least. Um, you know, and again, I think sometimes when you ask for, you know, less, you, you have a, a good chance of getting it. There's no match required with this program. So everything you get, you keep, you know, and so that is one thing to consider. Um, is at least um, you know, making a smaller request to help assess, you know, the future of the building.
Because I think like, we've had great dreams for that building and kind of talked to people about it, but we don't actually know the feasibility of any of those ideas yet. So I think that would be like our first.
Yeah, no, I think that, that, that's an element of this, whether you want to make it the, the main focus of your application. Um, you know, I, I, we can, that can be further discussed, but that can be um a reimbursable expense, so to speak. So, um, and then lastly, um, the R cap program or RACP, redevelopment assistance capital program. Um, again, this is a, a, a broadly political program that is administered through the Pennsylvania Office of the Budget. Um, it requires um a great deal of legislative support. Uh, there's a multitude of ways to, to go about getting one. Um, again, the total project cost has to be a million. However, um, your, your project cost of anything, you know, you'd like to do at the high school is likely to exceed a million dollars. And so um, again, that can um, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get hung up on that number, but it does, however, require a one-to-one match. And so that's a little bit of a steeper uh price point compared to the other ones. Um, there is not a current application period open at this point. Um, they typically uh, don't give much advance notice for when they're opening them. Um, and, and they're typically done roughly beginning of the year. They did one at the end of last year or opened it at the end of last year. Um, and then, you know, they, they, it's sort of on a rolling basis is how I, how I'd describe it. So um, yeah, again, uh, that, that's really it. I wanted to focus on kind of what, there's, there's a lot out there. Um, I think this was the, the ones that I felt were most applicable for, you know, kind of what the districts consider.
I just wanted to add, for part of what we were, uh, when I was at the conference at PASBO, uh, we had a, a seminar regarding some of those grants and there were legislators there specifically, and I don't want to sound like a Debbie Downer here, but specifically on the, the first three that you discussed, we talked about those, but the first one in particular, you know, what they said that um, they felt everything that, you know, those funds were probably going to be used. First case scenario would be school districts that had lead problems in their water and asbestos in their systems. Those could be the top priority with, as you said, the lowest income ratio. So in a nutshell, Philadelphia, you know, those large cities with, you know, schools that are hurting will probably be the ones that are going to eat up that hundred thousand or a hundred million dollars.
Yeah, so.
When you think of five hundred school districts in the, the Commonwealth and a hundred million dollars, if they split that up equally, you know what I mean? That's not a whole lot of money for the school. So um, you know, and again, I'm not trying to shy away from that. I just think that of all the ones that you spoke about, the third one with the possibility of um, tying in the municipality and doing something with the high school as far as broadband, as far as help with gymnasium, library for education. I think, you know, in my mind, and after discussing those things there, that would probably be the best bet for us to, to try to go. Uh, again, I'm not saying we couldn't get one of those others, but the consensus from the, the representative there was that the force of the school districts are probably going to keep that money up on water treatment systems and, and lead remediation and um, a- as well as asbestos.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I, I think the one thing to note um is that with the Public School Facility Improvement Grant Program, the one that is the uh half million dollars to five million dollar award, um, that limits how much can go to one district. Um, that was put in there to prevent Philadelphia from getting all a hundred million dollars. Um, and so that's capped at twenty percent. So twenty percent of whatever they award cannot go to a single district. Um, however, on the environmental repairs um program, that's not capped. And you know, I, I don't know how much that program candidly applies um to the district in terms of, you know, concerns that are out there. Um, but yeah, I would agree. I mean. You know, concerns that are out there, um but yeah, I would agree, I mean, I I think if you. You know, in my opinion, based on conversations I've had, I think they're going to. Uh try to target as many districts as they can without just giving peanuts, and so, um. You know, I I I wouldn't be surprised, I would be surprised if, you know, a significant number of districts receive. Over two million dollars or even, you know, that five million dollar cap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Uh, penalized easement. Be resolved, the Board of Education moves to execute and report penalized easement and related documents.
Good morning. There's no Mrs. Crowe, second to Mr. Mike Basil. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Is Mara back or not?
She's here. Mara, what was your response?
I said aye.
Uh any opposed?
Motion carries. Okay. Electrical service relocation is a driving need. Be resolved, the Board of Education proposes penalized costs in the amount of. Forty-two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and forty, or thirty-four cents for their portion of the work associated with relocating. The electrical service. The Board of Education also approves a not to exceed amount of four hundred and fifty dollars for the cost associated. With the filing of the easement documents, which are required by penalize before they will perform the work.
Five more key? Mr. Mike Basil? Second to Mrs. Jen Zancho. Any questions or comments?
Could you clarify if this is?
Mike, this, Mike, did you have a question?
No, I have.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we clarified that this four hundred and fifty dollar means.
Those are the costs according.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do a roll call on that one.
Mrs. Hoover? Yeah. Doctor Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe, yes. Mr. Kerman Walker?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, Mrs. Kerman Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee, yes, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Miss Zancho?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, item max, the high school building, discuss options for the high school building. Doctor Besson?
Thank you, uh I think we had lots of options from Andrew this evening. So I think the uh the options and the possibilities are there, of course, this is up to the board. But I am willing to help, and I know Andrew will, and we have other community members that are interested in looking at. How we can use that facility up there, so I'm excited to see what we can do with that. That's all I have.
Um, we had started conversations about the high school previously. And I'm hoping that we can just continue those with our new members of the board. Um, so that any frameworks that we have begun can continue.
Mr. Basil, Dan?
Oh, good. Yeah, Kev, I was just gonna ask, Cheryl, she, do we have plans in the, like, nears future, like, next couple of months, next? What's, do we have a, I don't know the timeframe, when we're maybe gonna sort of, maybe to. Kind of, you know, discuss and just how we want to proceed, maybe it can take a while to get arrangements made by the time the, this project starts?
Well, um, I think that we should tailor the discussion until the next meeting. To see exactly what we have, I know that there were feasibility studies done. And um I think we need to look at what was provided before we came to the consolidation that we're doing now.
So we want to table this for the call?
Yes, I, I think we should.
Well, it's, it's nothing to vote on, and we can continue the discussion at the top if you want, that's fine. Okay, I'll write that back here for that.
I have one more thing to add, I I would just be curious to maybe seek an appraisal to see what it is worth. What are value of the building space?
Let, let's, um, if we can, I I did make a note to put that on the pile, so you can actually talk about it too.
Yeah.
And a little bit more jack, okay? So we can, since this is, although you may want to do that.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if we can put all that on the pile, we'll just.
Yeah.
Discussion, I think, yeah, I I think that that would be wise, like, like I said, I think there is information out there that we need to gather.
Yeah, that's fine. Anyhow? Mara, I'll just read your business of finance for simplicity, okay?
Yep.
Okay, item A, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five military preliminary budget, discuss the twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget, just to point.
I provided you guys with some information last time, uh part of the, as I explained before. Part of the difficulty in putting the budget together at 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 this time is that there's a, a big fluctuation in what the state is saying our basic education and funding is going to be. And what we got from the previous year, we really don't know, and sometimes. It's, or most times, it's not a big difference, we have, you know, maybe fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in difference. This year, we are looking at about five hundred, a half a million dollars difference in what the basic education funding. Proposal is, and now that's all based on the governor's budget proposal, so we're not guaranteed that money. So, in discussing it with some, you know, some people at PASBO, uh a lot of people are just. You know, we're assuming that there's going to be a portion of that, I am not going to budget that entire BEF in our. In our budget, um I think it would be, you know, if we do get those funds, that would be, you know, icing on the cake, however. I believe that, um, you know, there's going to be some adjustments made to the budget that I prepare, however. I'm, uh, you know, I'm requesting s- some members of the board to come in and sit down, I want to discuss with you. What your thoughts are, I mean, I I I, you know, I've shown, the numbers I have shown do not. At this point, have a, a tax increase in, and that's not to say. That I feel that that can happen from here on out, I stand by the fact that. Part of this building project is going to require tax increases down the road, we have enough. Fund balance and cash reserves available at this point, that we don't have to get a tax increase this year, however. If in fact that BEF funding comes in, as we hope that it does. That may alleviate the possibility that we, you know, that we may not have to go as high down the road, I think. Until this, and because this is the first year that this BEF adjustment so high has been made. Nobody really know, and unfortunately, one of the, the biggest complaints at the conference was. That none of us business managers can, can provide our awards with. Good numbers, and it's not just small numbers, it's a big number difference, so, um, but unfortunately, who said? Do the best you can, so, again, I'm going to be very conservative in those numbers. And um quite frankly, I think even with those numbers, that this board can operate next year without any dire straits, I think. There's been some, some thought process that we're, you know, we're going broke here, that, that's not the case, we. Have funds, you know, we can always, you know, watch some save, or watch some costs, however. This building project is not going to break the district. Um, I, you know, I, I feel that we're gonna get this BEF funding eventually. If it's not what they say, that's fine, I, we will be able to operate without it, so I ask. The board to decide who is going to come in, sit down and discuss what I have, I have some, you know, some pretty good. Uh, packages on our computer that can do some projections and whatnot. Um, I'm comfortable with our expenditure side, I'm just a little bit. Leary on, on the revenues because of that big, that dollar difference, so. That's what I would hope that can happen within the next week or so, that we can come back. During April, provide the board with something that some board members at least say, yes, I've looked at, it made sense, and move forward.
And I would like to add, in December, I talked about that lump sum or that additional monies. That were coming to the districts because of the fair funding lawsuit, that is included in this BEF. The, the additional portion, so originally, they were talking about it over a five-year period. Now they're talking over seven years, and in talking with other superintendents, once again. We're, we're looking at possibly, you know, five hundred thousand additional dollars than last year. And I think Roland is wise to not put all of that in our budget, because that hasn't been promised to us. And that may change, the other question we have as superintendents, we don't know if this is going to last seven years. It's supposed to, but this being the first year, w- we don't know, so I think it's wise that we're cautious. But Roland and I went through quite a few of the numbers today, and our district is not losing money, we are not in dire straits. And I, I agree with his assessment that he shared with me today. Of our uh fund balance and being able to go next year without a tax increase, but. We may have to look at something in the future, and we can still afford this project.
I think the, you know, the whole thing is, is our operations will, will sustain, sustain themselves throughout the next year. We then have to, you know. What I don't want to do is I don't want to initiate a tax increase or suggest that we have one with this five hundred thousand dollars in the balance. If that's the case, in essence, you know, looking at. You know, our average, we're, we're talking of, uh, you know, a- a- approximately, uh, seven, eight years of tax. Um, that were, you know, that that takes place, so. Uh, again, I I think it wouldn't be prudent at this point to say we're going to go ahead and. Ask for a, an increase if in fact this money is going to come through, so. But again, I I welcome, I'm not sure the legal, you know, Toby, you may be able, I mean, what can we do? As far as having people on the off, you know, come down and uh make sure that, you know, we can discuss it, but not. You know, go, if you have any problems with sunshine laws or whatever, so I would hope that at least the finance chair and. Whomever else the president decides should come, that we sit down and discuss that.
I have one question, this BEF money that you're talking about, does it have to be spent on certain items, like, can it be a building cost fund, or does that have to be an operational?
It's all general fund money.
Whatever you want, whatever we want, yeah.
That's a cool question, we asked that one. So if it's in April, you you have, you think you have a preliminary budget then?
Well, I will have a preliminary budget, but.
Right.
Uh, what I'm saying to you is I will almost guarantee you.
It's good change.
That the state will not have their stuff, right, so we will not know for sure until probably in July at the earliest. Whether or not that BEF has come, what I'm saying to you is, is that I'm going to make sure we cover ourselves with. What we know we can get in and cover with any fund balance that we have available. To make sure that the budget that is, that is presented is feasible, now, again. If in February or July, the state passes their budget and we get anything more than probably. Yeah, I think I'm going to put a hundred and somewhat thousand of that BEF in, in the, the budget, but the remaining portion, I'm leaving out, so. Um, if in fact that comes through, then, you know, that'll be, you know, we can reopen the budget, there's really no need to. If, you know, if if I'm showing, you know, I've already done the, the projection of the, the salaries based on all the contracts that are in place. The increases that are in the, the contracts, projected increases as they typically have been in the contract. And those numbers are fitting to the, to the budget, and with those, as well as. My estimate that the, the hospitalization costs and those things will stay pretty. Uh, black line, which they have over the last few years, so I'm confident that the payroll numbers, which are the big ones. Again, I've always stated this in the past, is that if you look at our budget. You know, you take away the salaries, you take away the transportation, you take away the utilities, and you take away the, um. Uh charter school, school cost, there's a little piece left, there's not much, so it's not, you know, those, those big things will be covered. Um, you know, so.
So that, that, the BEF, though, that we were, the additional, that document that was sent back, well, back, it was over four million dollars, I think, that we may potentially get.
That, see, that was used, they, they, they um have a couple of factors that they, they looked at with those numbers.
Right.
They used.
But the lower, we may get a half a million more, potentially, now, I'm only that number.
Right.
I'm saying, but if they spread out over seven years at half a million.
Correct.
Right, that's what they're, that's what the thought is, problem that, that we had, again, it's the, the PASBO. When, when we were discussing it there, is like, none of the legislature, legislators wants to say, we're going to guarantee you something seven years from now. Okay, they, that's what they're working, so they anticipate that there will be an increase. But, you know, I'm not going to count on those dollars down the road.
I did that, yeah, I totally did that, I just.
But, but I feel that there will be something coming because of. The, the disproportionate way that BEF has been done.
And I believe in December, I said some, I showed you a chart that said about four point three million. If I go with the five hundred thousand over seven years, then we're about three point five million, so it's already dropped. That was kind of the pie in the sky.
It came down.
Right, so that came down, whether that number will stick there.
Yeah.
Roland, what did you put in for at-wheel employees for raises, you mentioned you had raises, according to the contract?
Typically, the, you know, the administrative, you know, pretty much all of our contracts historically have been three percent. That's what I have plugged into the budget across the board, and I was, don't forget, we have, we have. They, you know, the largest of all the contracts is the, the uh.
Teachers.
Contract, now they're good until, I think, twenty-six or twenty-seven, so those built-in amounts are there, there is no changing, though. So, again, in the numbers that I've come up with, that's what I, that I plugged in, and that was done. Before, you know, at the beginning of my whole process.
So, so, just a couple of other quick questions, so, um, one thing I want to remind the board too, is again, we had. Tax increase factor, I know you're saying that you, you're going to submit it without maybe showing any tax increase, but. Again, I think the two point seven, two point five mils or something.
Two point five is what was planned for this year.
That's, that's, that could be a lot.
So when you miss, yeah, naturally, it's, it's, it's like a fun, when you miss one year, you miss that part that continues to go on. But, uh, again, I feel comfortable in saying that, you know. We should wait, now, if we go through and it doesn't happen, then, you know, kind of lost the year. But I don't think it's fair to, to hit a tax increase if. The, the possibility is out there for all this money to come.
So traditionally, the finance chair would meet with you, Mara, I know, I know you're on, so are you planning on coming down to meet with Roland, might I ask, or? Cause we.
Yeah, I. No, I don't mind coming down.
Okay.
What does it have to find, a day that works for both of us, so?
Okay, people coordinate, let me know, I'd appreciate it.
We have to watch.
Yeah, I, I'll do a talk about that.
We'll, we'll make sure.
Yeah.
Any else? Item B, are you, are you eight gen- general fund operating budget be resolved? The Board of Education approves twenty-four, twenty-five application, intermediate unit eight general fund operating budget as presented in appendix one. Do I have a motion? First one, Mrs. Crowe, second one, this is Mr. Basil? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
I M C, Internet Service Provider, be resolved, Board of Education accepts the bid from Comcast in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars pre-E rate and one hundred and forty-six dollars per month with E rate applied. The following of the bid received by the IU eight for that service, Comcast one gigabytes, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, Centurnet one gigabyte, four thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Do I have a motion? First one, Mr. Jen Zenshaw. Second one, Mr. Mike Basil.
I have a question.
Yeah, okay.
The one forty-six.
Hold on. Any questions or comments? This is.
Um.
It's not on the table, will I ask?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
All right, the um one forty-six, is that in addition to the nine seventy-five, or does that matter?
The one forty-six is the cost.
Okay. So, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Item D. All right, two thousand twenty-four IU eight board ballot. Choose the nominees for the Appalachian Intermediate Unit Eight Board of Directors. Vows will be provided for your vote at the March nineteenth, two thousand twenty for regular meeting. As per question two, you should all have it at your desk.
Yes.
Please fill them out before you guys get in with Mike and having tonight. All right, thank you, everybody. That's all Mara has for this evening. Community relations, or nothing at this time. Pre-commend instruction, Mrs. Norman Crowe.
Um, I have nothing at this time, but um in the past, for the last eight years or so, by January, we always had a meeting. Um, I don't know curriculum, I'm not getting any updates. Principals, feel free to load my email with information or new things you're doing in the school, new classes that are being taught for scheduling, because right now, um, I guess things are dormant, there's no updates, and there's no information that I'm requiring.
Lisa is planning a meeting in April. So she will have that finalized in April and will do our typical meeting that we always do.
Okay, does that allow enough time for scheduling?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, legislation and policy development, I have nothing at this time. Personnel, Mr. Gerard Kerman.
Presentations. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts with regrets. The resignation of Joyce Frasco as a school aide in the district effective March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, as been said.
Do I have a motion? Both for Mrs. Crowe?
Second.
Second one, Mr. Kerman. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Item B. Our most official. Be resolved, Board of Education accepts with regrets the retirement and education of Miss Amy Clark, special ed, education teacher. Miss Clark has fifteen years in the district and thirty-one years of service.
Any motion?
I'll motion.
For Mr. Kerman. Second one, Mrs. Carol Lee. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries. Let me just say thank you to Amy for the for the dis. So you'll do one of this.
Good lady. Any else, sir?
That's all for him.
Okay, staff development, Mrs. Jennifer Zenshaw.
I M A, Teacher Development. Be it resolved, Board of Education approves development of a committee to address concerns from teachers and staff about their employment. The committee should include Staff Development Chair, Personnel Chair, Superintendent N C E A and N C E A, I'm sorry, N C E S P A Presidents. I'll make the motion.
First one, Mr. Jennifer Zenshaw. Second one, Mrs. Daniel Hoover. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Dr. Crowe?
No.
Mrs. Crowe? No, I don't think it's necessary. Uh, Mr. Kerman.
No.
No.
Mrs. Lee? No. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Miss Zenshaw? Yes. This is who? Motion carries.
I have a loud and clear message. Um, if I can ask, do we still hold a P T F O committee? Or would be missing?
Okay, next item, please.
P T O, there's two people that run out.
Next item, please. That's all. It's done. Item B.
Title One Conference, P A F P C. Be resolved, Board of Education approves a request from Carolyn Arden to attend the annual Title One Conference, P A F P C in Pittsburgh at the Westin Hotel on April fourteenth through seventeen, twenty twenty-four. The cost to the district will be one thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and twelve cents paid from the Title One funds, and I'll make the motion.
First one, Mr. Jen Zenshaw. Second one, Mrs. Diana Hoover. Questions or comments? Uh, uh, roll call.
Mrs. Hoover? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Crowe? Yes. Mr. Kerman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Lee? Yeah. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yep.
Miss Zenshaw? Yes. Mrs. Hoover? Yes. Dr. Crowe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I M C, Pennsylvania Music Educators Association Conference. Be it resolved, Board of Education approves a request from Alison Patterson to attend the FEMA conference on April eighteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-four in Erie, PA. The cost to the district will be one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Then I'll make the motion.
First one, Mr. Jen Zenshaw, I'll second. Second one, Mr. PJ Shaw. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Kerman.
No.
Mrs. Kerman.
No.
Lee? No. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yep.
Miss Zenshaw? Yes. Mrs. Hoover? Yes. This, Dr. Crowe?
I have to stay consistent, no.
Mrs. Crowe? I'll say no to this one. Motion carries.
What are we doing? Item D.
We aren't doing it.
Item D.
Pennsylvania Music Educators Association Conference. Be it resolved, Board of Education approves a request for Jennifer Fox to attend FEMA conference on April eighteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-four in Erie, PA. The cost to the district will be three hundred and sixty-five dollars. I'll make the motion.
First one, Mrs. Jen Zenshaw.
I'll second.
Second one, Mr. PJ Shaw. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Kerman.
Yes.
Lee? Yeah. Mr. Shaw?
Is it too late to go back to questions and comments?
There it is.
I mean.
Yes, it is.
Okay, then yes.
Mr. Basil? Miss Zenshaw? Yes. Mrs. Hoover? Yeah. Dr. Crowe?
I can stay consistent, no.
Mrs. Crowe? Yes. Mrs. Crim, I'm sorry, Mr. Kerman.
Well.
Motion carries. Do you know that she
Item E.
would say she is the chaperone, she can't go without the other.
Item E, please. Item E.
As it was explained in the last meeting.
Item E, please.
Item E, prepaid counts grant meeting. Be it resolved, Board of Education approves the attendance of Mr. Walden Polanich at the lead agency mandatory P A prepaid counts grantee meeting on April second through the third, twenty twenty-four in Harrisburg, PA. The cost to the district is three hundred and fifty dollars. I'll make the motion.
Next one, Mr. Jen Zenshaw. Second one, Mr. Mike Basil. Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. Prepaid is not ours, so why are we responsible for sending somebody I don't quite understand?
It is ours. We're we're the lead agency in prepaid accounts. Northern Cambria School District is the lead agency. C C A C is the um the, I forget what do they call them, yeah. Everything has to come through us.
We can still take a group.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and as part of that.
It's managed.
We, but we did not receive the grant in our school district's name.
Yes, we did.
We did, we did last year, too.
Board, Marv. Money comes through to us. Money comes to us and we pay th- them to to operate and retain our portion of the grant, transportation and whatever else is in.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, roll call.
Mrs. Lee? Uh, yes. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yep.
Miss Zenshaw? Yes. Uh, Mrs. Hoover? Yeah. Dr. Crowe?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Crowe? Yes. Mr. Kerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have M V F going towards Ambassador's Weekend. Be it resolved, Board of Education approves a request of Mrs. Dan Miko to attend V F Ambassador's Weekend in Boston, Massachusetts on April twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. This is part of their professional development workshop to develop leaders of skill. There is no cost to the district except for the substitute for one day, one hundred and forty-five dollars. I'll make the motion.
First one, Mrs. Zenzenzshaw. Second one, Mrs. Daniel Hoover. Any questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Miss Zenshaw? Yes. Mrs. Hoover? Yeah. Dr. Crowe?
Yes, since there's no cost.
Mrs. Crowe? Yes. Mr. Kerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee? Motion carries.
Was that nine to zero?
Yes, it is.
Any else? Student activities, Mr. Mike Basil.
All right, A, Action Referral Guard. Be resolved, Board of Education approve the point of the following. Jenny Fox, Springs State Manager, three-year agreement. Uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, thirteen hundred thirty-nine dollars, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirteen hundred seventy-nine dollars, twenty-five, twenty-six, fourteen hundred twenty dollars, and I will make that motion.
First one, Mr. Mike Basil. Second one, Mrs. Jen Zenshaw. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
All right, uh, B, fundraiser calendar addition. Be resolved, Board of Education approve the claim addition to the fundraiser calendar, Amber Doherty, uh, April class, Vince Easter Andy for the filter, March sixth through eighteen, two thousand twenty-four. Candy McKay softball team, ball skills clinic for girls, eighth through twelfth, for Kim account, April first through May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and I will make that motion.
First one, Mr. Mike Basil. Second one, Mr. Daniel. Questions or comments?
Do we, do we need to add the word reactive? Because this is over.
You'd have to.
No, you're just, you're just, you're just adding it, whether it happened or not. You're not approving it, you're just approving the addition to the calendar. Confirmed, if you like it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
All right, uh, C, P J A, P J A, State Competition. Be resolved, Board of Education approve the request on Andrew Doherty for six students, Indiana Pennsylvania Junior Achievement State Competition. Defense Department University on May nineteen through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Cost to district is fifteen hundred and ten dollars. The attachment report. And again, I'll make that motion.
First one, Mr. Mike Basil. Second one, Mr. Daniel. Questions or comments?
I'm sorry, who seconded this?
Mrs. Hoover.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, still a roll call.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Miss Zenshaw? That's Mrs. Hoover? Yeah. Dr. Crowe?
Yes, and good luck.
Good, um, Mrs. Crowe? Yes. Mr. Kerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee? Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Heather, can you take one real quick comment, too? Just a real quick plug for tomorrow night, it's boys are gonna be a solo solo concert at the high school, and play for March Music Month, so they're going to want to come in for night seven P M at the high school.
Auditorium or? Is auditorium?
Yes.
Did I get that? Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, transportation, Mrs. Hoover.
I am made by driver approval. Be it resolved, Board of Education, Mr. Tom Slimer and the driver for the living every single district. Door agency has a third.
Yes, he does.
First one, Mrs. Daniel Hoover. Second one, Mr. Mike Basil. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Athletics, Mr. Patrick Shaw.
Item A, volunteer coaches. Be it resolved, Board of Education approves the following volunteer coaches. Madison Hassan, girls track and field, Betty Krueg, volunteer junior high softball. At zero dollars, I will make that motion.
First one, Mr. PJ Shaw. Second one, Mrs. Jen Zenshaw. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Item B, Moss Creek Rod and Gun Club. Be it resolved, Board of Education authorizes the requested donation to the Moss Creek Rod and Rod and Guns Club for one thousand five hundred dollars to defray from some of the costs for heat, lights, and maintaining the range for the rifle team season.
I'll make that motion. Second one, Mrs. Jen Zenshaw. Questions or comments?
We make this donation every year, it's prescribed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Item C. To correct that. I M C Purchase Line Golf Co-op. Be it resolved, Board of Education approves creating a second corporation with Purchase Line School District for varsity golf. Purchase Line School District does not have a varsity golf team that would like to create or co-op with Northern Cambria currently holds with Harmony School District. Adding Purchase Line to the co-op would not charge uh, or would not change golf classifications for the P I double A. I didn't make that motion.
First one, Mr. PJ Shaw. I will second it. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a quick comment. It's just that Mr. Blitzydork was here ahead of the meeting, um, and I think he had the leave release. He's been a long bit here. Um, he just said that um, coaching, that it's kind of a security for a team, that it's a good thing to possibly consider that in.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, payment of the bills. Be resolved, the payment of the bills for the month of March two thousand twenty-four be approved as presented or amended, received, and filed. I have a motion. First one, Mr. Mike Basil. Second one, Mrs. Carol Lee. Questions or comments? My only comment is I didn't like the way the baseball one was handled. Uh, it was not water-proof before it was done. Let's do a roll call.
Uh, Miss Zenshaw? Yes. Mrs. Hoover? Yeah. Dr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe? Yes. Mr. Kerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee? Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, um, let's, anybody have any ideas that they wanna on the cow for possible inclusion? Go ahead.
I wanna make sure um that what what I discussed at the uh, beginning of um, the the cow for March cow that we put on discussion for a five thousand dollar donation for um for upkeep of the baseball field and showing that we would like to mend that partnership. And I would also like to revisit um item D, the Pennsylvania Music Educator Music Educator Association Conference uh, to be revisited and um, that we could discuss and then vote at the cow due to the nature of uh, timing, that it would be in in April, April eighteenth to the twentieth, I think. I just think it's very detrimental to that, uh, it's not all about um whether we can schedule classes or we can get the proper books for this. The kids that are in music uh, deserve to have every opportunity, the teachers deserve to have the The kids that are in music, uh, deserve to have every opportunity, the teachers deserve to have the, the. Professional development, the same as any other teacher that requests to go to a conference, so I think that's something we need to revisit.
Okay. Anybody else?
Um, I would like to hold a workshop for the teachers and the principals, for any, anyone in the staff at the district. I feel as a board member, we have a responsibility to hear any concerns and praises that these people may offer to us, and I would like to have a workshop. Um, and to discuss items and also, um, discuss ways to improve the quality of the community within the school.
Okay, we'll leave that in writing.
Certainly, okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Kevin here.
Go ahead, man.
Uh, you already got the building project, which is great for high school, um, I'd like to revisit the solar. Project that the vendor that met with us last year about. Doing a solar ray project.
Can we? Can you add that to your thing next on the cow?
Yeah, I, we can talk about that, there, there's, um. Due to the Inflation Reduction Act, there's, uh, direct pay, which is, um. Actually, it ties in with what Hank was saying, it, when you're a tax entity, and when you're giving out, you can't, your, a tax credit does nothing for you. So what they did was they created this concept called direct pay. Where if you implement that renewable, uh, energy resource, um, instead of getting the value of a tax credit. The IRS will write you a check directly. Uh, we could talk about it more, but it's, um. Without that, you know, solar typically doesn't make a ton of sense, because by the time. You're getting the benefit after you've paid off the, the cost to implement, you're getting ready to replace a system, so. Um, with these incentives, it makes sense, without them, not as much.
Okay, let me make sure to bounce that, any else?
I did have two other things.
Well, you're still up, so go ahead.
Okay, uh, one is, I'd like to revisit the hundred dollar threshold, Mars that she was going to dig in was the. To get clarification, I felt like we kind of put a band-aid on that, it, it works for the time being, but I don't feel like it was. We just approved the threshold, but I'm still wondering whether or not that was. Standard process in terms of how we interpreted the, um, hundred dollar threshold, whether or not. It's not that I agree with the two thousand dollars threshold, but, um, I still feel like we may. Be able to do more than just two thousand dollars, and I did send the information to Mars, I just like all on that, if we could rediscuss. Clarification on that for the next meeting, um, maybe from P S B A. And then. And then we talk about the, I, that was it, I just looked up, thank you.
Yeah, nothing, the second one wasn't, thirty day high school?
Yes, okay.
Go ahead, PJ.
Uh, and then I would, if we could just make sure since the, uh, agreement was. For softball and baseball, that it was finished and we're doing our part down there, if we could get their funds to them.
You mean payment for the season? Uh, you mean payment for the season?
Correct, for like the lease.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already been. Yes. And that was off on vacation last week, but.
I just know that that was a complaint they had last time, they didn't put a date when they wanted it.
And she cut a check.
Okay, thank you very much.
So we don't need that on them, right?
Nope.
Okay. It's ten, you're right. All right, anybody else? Okay. Mark, go ahead, Mark.
Um, with the new building consolidation. Do we have, um. A plan as far as, um. Taking care of the new building after it's built? Is, is there a plan, and was that part of the building? Part of what, what site logic did, you, you didn't come up with a maintenance plan or anything, correct? So, do we have a maintenance plan for the new building?
At only, I can address that, yes. Uh, John and I have had several discussions, we typically do not, we don't have one right now, but we need to put one into place, and John is very aware of that. We want to look at, you know, a cycle of when it's time to replace things and when it's time to update things, so that things do not get to that point again.
Yeah.
So, yes, he is well aware of that, I've had that discussion with him. Uh, I've had the discussion a little bit with Roland about. You know, John having his budget, and you've talked about this PJ, about John with his budget and looking at. You know, every so many years, we need to look at what carpeting needs replaced. What walls need to be painted, so forth and so on, so, yes, moving forward, that is definitely something that I have plans for.
Okay, does that include the grounds outside the building also?
Certainly, yeah, it would include everything.
Do we have a timeline as?
We don't have anything written at this point, but I can certainly have him start working on that. I don't know, that's something that might take a little time to adapt and come up with, but. I foresee it as a working document that we would have.
Okay.
Does that include storage of ass builds and permits and all that kind of stuff also?
Well, what we're working on, uh, right now is that we're looking at getting everything digital. So, since I've been here, we've had issues with where is stuff? We can't find stuff. So, right now, we have some files that are over here, we have some files other places. So, the board did approve, uh, in January for us to look at a way to make all of our files digital. And we're working on that slowly but surely, it's a process that will take some time. But we are working towards that, so yes, that we have everything in digital formats and we have it easily accessible.
Okay, anybody else?
So, let's talk about the future of the softball field at the elementary, middle school and plans moving forward to, uh. Get that brought up to. A place where it's an asset, a school, and making sure that we have all our permits in place, get that, um. I mean, that was the plan, right?
Okay. Any more? Okay, we're going to go into an executive session here, um, at the end of the meeting, we will not. Be taking any votes of any kind when we come back, except to resume the meeting and then to adjourn the meeting. Okay, so nothing will be decided after we come down. So, be resolved, the Board of Education moves to the executive section to stop students, contact personnel and warranty matters at. Seven thirty, eight P M. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion for that.
I'll second it.
Second one, Mr. Jerry Terminar. All in favor? Okay, both. Well.